Thank you. So we matters arising from closed at the minute of our closed session dated December 18th be adopted and mover for those. Counselor Black and Counselor Nelson, all in favor? Now I'll ask, does anyone have pecuniary interest at all for open session? And see none? And we have our minutes from February the fifth. And Carrie, I want to look back. I don't recall getting a motion. This is a little for our agenda. Do we have a mover? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So adoption of our minutes from February 5th and Counselor Webb and Counselor Burt, all in favor? And we'll call our next delegation, Mr. Alan Talk, Alan Wilson, please, and you are a member of the Board from Brock Mission. And speaking to the expansion. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Warren, members of council. I can't begging, as I do occasionally and have over the years. I have the privilege of sitting in the Board of Brock Mission, which as you folks know, serves the homeless from our city and county. Who are addicted to illegal drugs and suffer from mental health illness. My ask today is twofold. Number one, if you would consider please supporting our project to build a 52-unit transitional housing facility at our Shimon Road site in the city of Peterborough. My second ask, which is pecuniary, is that if you could please consider granting us $100,000 to support the up to building permit stage for our facility. The city of Peterborough have already given us $250,000. And that takes us through the architectural, site planning, and rezoning phase. You may know that Maryland has used its strong mayor powers. But we decided as a board not to run roughshod over anything. So we're doing all necessary studies and reports, geotech, geological, stormwater management, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not cutting any corners. We're respecting the process, but we're moving rapidly. I made a presentation to City Council at the beginning of December. And his worship will present a motion on February 24th to approve our site plan and our rezoning applications under his strong mayor powers. So we're moving very quickly. Of course, you know what quickly means. It means a year of working to get, you know, to a stage where we're making progress. The next phase, which is where the $100,000 would come into the equation is that we have already onboard engineers. We have an architect already appointed, but he's not been paid any money. He will be next week. We have DM rules as our planning consultants. They have already been given the contract and are working, but will be paid next week for some of their work. We have a number of engineering firms already working for us, bases a letter of intent that I have given them. And they will receive some money if we receive the $100,000. And the purpose of the $100,000 is to take us to the from the site planning and rezoning stage, which has happened, will have taken three months, which is pretty amazing, to the building permit stage. And of course, Strong Mayor Powers don't intervene in that. But we have already had the building department of the city of Peterborough and our architect and our planner working closely together. And we won't be in a position to apply for a building permit on March 7th. Now, to move, so and we expect to have a building permit. It's been committed by March 31st. But to get to shovel-ready stage, which is what's necessary for federal funding to move through rapidly, whether it be federal or provincial, actually, we have both the MP and the MPP working on it. We need to hire the electrical, civil and structural, and mechanical engineering consultants. Those individual firms, I will tell you to be upfront, have already been doing some preliminary work for us. But we need to get the basement, footings, et cetera, designed. As you know, the first thing that happens on site is we dig a big hole and we dig trenches and we do all the piping, electrical, et cetera. That work will go to Drain Brothers. We have already, the letter of intent is already gone to the companies that were engaged by the city of Peterborough to build the Monakin Road Affordable Housing Development. So we're sort of replicating that design, copying it, if you will. The contractors who worked on that project are already working on the design of this of ours. And I need a little bit of money to be able to say to them, here is at least a statement of we are engaging you. But when we get federal funding, we will give you a proper contract. So that is where the $100,000 comes in. The $250 has taken us through site planning, et cetera. The $100,000 will take us through to shovel-ready, which is absolutely crucial. A letter of support from the city, which we already got unanimously approved, a letter of support from the county, which I'm asking for, please, would go with that application for federal funding. I probably shouldn't say more about who's working on what with funding because it's actually progressing very quickly. So the net net is, we currently operate two facilities. We've been operating for 37 years. We're the only facilities, only facility in the city of Peterborough and the county of Peterborough that has been providing emergency shelter and transitional housing. We operate one facility for men and those who identify as men on Mary Street, quite close by. Facility was open in 2022. There we have 40 shelter beds and 15 transitional housing units. And we've been doing transitional housing for quite some years. And transitional housing is the healing component. Crisis shelters simply give people a bed and food in their stomachs. But it's not a healing phase. The city operates Wolf Street, which probably has another year of its life. Trinity, which is unlike us in many ways, which probably has another two years of its life. They're temporary. We're permanent. And the 52 units, and I will describe very quickly because it will take unnecessarily your time. In the basement, we will have the utilities, electrical, mechanical, et cetera. We will have meeting areas where we will have various places that our individuals can visit each other, take counseling classes. Our first floor is very unique because mainly last, if we would consider introducing two palliative care beds to our facility. Now, three and up is a medical facility. We have designed it to. The current providers in the city of Peterborough who provide palliative care will not take homeless people. The truth is, we take them. At Brock Mission, there's usually, if there's one or two, that's it. It's not, you know, it's not a huge burden, but we've designed two very nice palliative care suites on a ground floor. Also with that, we have a small clinic. As you know, we operate a clinic at Murray Street. That's for any homeless person in the city and county. But this will be a small clinic just for the people in the building. It's a six-story building. If we could move through maybe to next, next one, next one. That's our clinic in Murray Street. Operated, run by Dr. Beamish and Major Leanne Quinn. Next one, please. That's just our golden stuff. You read all of this. Next one, please. Next one, please. That's what a suite looks like. And they're really nice. And that's important, that people who have committed to a wellness journey are given a nice place to stay and are required to look after it. So there's that step in responsibility. And the one thing that sets us aside from other providers of emergency shelter and transitional housing, which we're the only ones really who do, is we're a rules-based organization. We don't allow illegal drugs to be brought into our property, to be sold in our property, to be used in our property. Period, whether it's the shelters or the transitional housing units. We don't allow disrespectful behavior. And it happens, but we de-escalate help and take it as a learning experience for individuals. So being rules-based makes us different from Wolf Street or Trinity in that you can't misbehave in our facilities. Now, people do, and they're brought through a process of learning. But individuals cannot learn to function in society again if they can behave the way they did in the street. So that rules-based aspect is very, very important. We also operate Cameron House, which is for ladies, and the new facility, if we could scroll down again, please. That's just another room. This is my original design, and I think most of you may know I was Director of Engineering at Quakerote. So designing things is kind of a hobby for me, although that was a lot of work. I then changed the design dramatically so we can scroll down again, if that's available. Is that the end of it? Okay, so there are some others, and I will describe the building to you at six stories. That was a 10 that I designed. I have copied the principle of the Monakin Road Affordable Housing Unit. I have recruited the contractors for that facility. And we've got a very nice color display. And I think that that you're see, oh, here we go. Here we go. Thanks, Sheriff. So that's kind of a non-colored version of the new building. Six stories. I've described the first floor. Each other floor will be 10 units. Now, this facility, like our existing facilities, will be operated on rules base.
Alan, I'm just going to remind you, we have a 10-minute limit.
Okay.
We've just gone over a bit, so if you could kind of come to a conclusion so we can open it up.
I will come to conclusions.
Questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warren. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. We'll open it up. Thank you for the presentation and all that you do. I'm quite familiar with the women's shelter at Cameron. The build was done by Peterborough Housing Corp. when I was Chair of that. So thank you. So questions? Yes, Counselor Black.
Thank you through you, Warden. Thanks for the presentation, Alan. You know, transitional housing is an important piece of the puzzle that is really missing in Peterborough. So
Yes.
I congratulate you on trying to move a project like this forward. Full disclosure on the vice chair forecast. So
Okay.
I know the challenges around, you know, the things that we've tried to put in place with respect to the new rehab and detox, the CTS, and the recent Hard Hub funding that we received. But I also am President of Abbey Field Lakefield. We're a not-for-profit trying to build some affordable housing in Lakefield. We're in site plan approval right now for a 19-unit building there.
Excellent.
So I understand all the challenges of a not-for-profit trying to build housing. So I'm impressed with the timeline you've come up with. We're three years into our project in Lakefield, and we're hoping to have a shovel in the ground this fall. But and the cost that you put forward, preliminary cost of almost $400,000 to get to shovel in the ground is a realistic number. That's our number, in fact, to build our smaller unit. You talk about funding and capital and operating. Where are you with securing the capital? I think your presentation said it was $23 million or something like that to build this building. And then, of course, operating a facility like this, a house like this is very expensive as far as social work staff, mental health staff, and 24-hour security in the building to to make sure there are no unit takeovers and things like that and drugs getting into the building. So can you just give us a little bit of an idea where you stand as far as formal funding approval? Has the city approved the $250,000 you talked about already?
Yes, it has.
They have? Could you talk a bit more about where you are with approvals with the province or the feds as far as funding? I know it's challenging. I know the process. So I'm just interested to hear where you're at with that and operating funding.
Operating funding will be $2 million a year, similar to, you know, we apply the same funding model as we do to existing facilities. The MPP has committed that he can get us $2 million a year to operate. And that's because of the critical need for transitional housing, the very unique nature of this. The 16 to 20 million, and I will round that, you know, more accurately in the in the next two weeks, probably. The MPP has said that there's a Phase Two of Hard Hub. I've also suggested to Donna Rogers that the Phase One that you've just been approved, some of that could come to us. Now, we're not in agreement with that. But I've just begun that conversation. And as you know, it takes time, and I might just reach out to you, one Allen to another.
Yeah, I have nothing else to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So sorry, from a federal point of view, the MP and the current government don't exactly get on very well. You know, they're heading into an election. All of the nonsense is going on. Nate Erskine Smith is the Minister of Housing. I will be meeting, I will be beginning the process this week for CMHC funding. I plan to take that application directly through his office at Oakville. And having the support of the city and the county being shovel-ready, because I believe it'll take a bit, two weeks to get everything in place for that application. So having your support, Madam Warden and counsel. I already have the city of Peterborough's support unanimously, the mayor and all of council. It's huge. I mean, going forward without that local support sort of leaves you dead in the water. The fact that we will be shovel-ready in a couple of weeks, the fact that we will reverse building permit by the end of March really speaks volumes to, and the fact that I can describe the progress from December 1st to today speaks to a specific fund that the federal government has, which is for rapid building of transitional housing. And I just learned about this last Thursday. Which you would think was written for us, quite frankly, and very few can apply to it because they're not building transitional housing. It's all shelter, shelter, shelter. And we understand shelter. We've been doing it for 37 years. But you can't take people out of illness and addiction unless there's a curative model. We've been operating a curative model for over 10 years now. We have 23 transitional housing units for men and women already. Last September, 11 graduated from those 23. Now, I'm not saying it all, you know, it all happened. Some of their six months, some were there a year, some were there two years, one was there four years. As you know, that's what it takes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? I see none. Now, we do have, sorry, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden. Okay, this is, thank you, Alan, for the presentation, and this is a difficult one. Certainly, you and your board deserve a lot of credit for your vision and your attempt to find, as Counselor Black has said, another piece to the puzzle. I would suggest that the letter of support from the county Peterborough is a given. I don't see any concern with that at all.
Thank you.
Okay. The $100,000 is the part that's making me uncomfortable. And I'll tell you why, Alan. It's the timing. We have a policy at the county Peterborough where any requests for funding goes into the grants and donation line in the budget, and it gets referred to the budget for discussion. We don't approve it now. We ultimately make a decision and approve it during budget time. We actually, we were having a trend in the county Peterborough of seriously eroding our reserves. I mean, I I know that we have that money in some reserve account. We has had an unfortunate trend of seriously eroding our reserves to the point where there's a report later in today's meeting where our treasurer has come to us with a solution on budget reliance, a budget reliance on reserve update. We're trying to reverse that trend. So I would suggest the appropriate thing, and Madam Warden, if there's no other conversation and no other motions put forward, I'm going to simply put the motion forward that we that we received the presentation and we refer the request to our budget deliberation, which unfortunately, Alan, won't happen until fall. It will be approved, I would expect and hope before the end of 2025. But I'm not prepared to make a decision on that now.
Counselor Taylor, just as you say, that the presentation, we have a motion in our package from Alan Thompson, board member from Brock Mission regarding Brock Mission 2026 Expansion Plan be received, and that a letter and that a letter be provided of support for this project. As we are all aware in this council chamber, we do, under our social services agreement with the city, certainly when the city does give monies to Brock Mission. People do not understand that part of that is county monies as well. So I just want Alan to be aware, we are supporting, but it is by way of the city funding, but a portion of that is certainly county money. So thank you. All right.
So the motion is to receive the report and refer the request for a budget deliberation.
And provide a letter of support.
Provide a letter of support. And then Refer the funding request to the budget 2026 budget deliberation.
Okay. So moved by that. And second, we have to get Counselor Franzen on the books here. So all in favor? So moved. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for the presentation and for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Consent items, we do have Counselor Graham has asked that 8B be pulled. Are there any other consent items that should be pulled? So can I have a motion then to receive the remaining consent items? Counselor Webb, Counselor Burt, all in favor? Thank you. And we will now speak to 8B. Counselor Graham?
Thank you, Warden.
You're, oh, okay, on mine, you're muted, but you're fine. Carry on.
Overcoming adversity. Thank you. And just a quick question. I asked this question a few years ago with regards to the tax policy. And so we have included in here on the latter pages that 35% residential rate for farmland awaiting development. I believe last time I asked this question, there were no properties identified as being taxed at this class. But I think if you go around the room, there's probably several counselors that could identify farmland awaiting development within their municipalities. So I just wasn't sure if there's actually properties being assessed with this rate or not yet, because I believe last time I asked, there were zero.
Thank you for that question. And Jen, please.
Through the warden, I don't actually know the answer to that question. Michelle is available, I think. I don't know if she knows it either. We might need to come back to you. Michelle, do you know the answer?
Yes, I do. We do not have any properties in that, in that class right now.
So through you, Warden, just to follow up. So I guess my question is, I understand the intention of having this subclass. And I believe maybe I'm not understanding the nuances that qualify properties for that subclass. But it's kind of confusing to continue to move forward with something that we think we can understand the intention of. But it just is not being applied and generating the appropriate revenue, which means those farmlands awaiting development are simply being taxed at the further reduced rate. So I'm kind of just, if we're going to continue on with this policy or this class and never apply it, you know, I just, I'm kind of, it's a bit confusing. So I'm not understanding, maybe maybe there's a future report that can come back explaining the subclass and why it's not applied so that maybe I'm wondering if it's similar to like those properties that have, you know, been created that aren't on our tax roll. And I just wonder if maybe there's a role for municipalities at the local level to sort of highlight and maybe identify those portions or properties so that they can be taxed appropriately.
So Counselor Graham, to be clear then, asking for a report back, maybe we could ask when this class, oh, through to Jen, but also when this class was last, has last been utilized as well.
Through the warden. So farmland awaiting development is when a developer buys up a farm.
Yeah.
And is going through the process of having, going through their planning process, but they continue to farm the land. So it would get taxed at the higher rate than just traditional farmland because it is in the develop, it's in the development stage. So that's typically what that would mean. I believe it would be the townships that would have to identify those parcels, and then we, they would tax it accordingly.
Oh, but only if they would have the similar subclass.
Correct.
So if they don't, the county has one, but the townships don't, and it's just not being applied.
If the, if the townships don't have it and the county does, then we would need to rely on, I guess, our planning department in conjunction with the township planning departments to be identifying those parcels of land, and then we can tax them at that class. But if it's not in our bylaw, then we can't tax them. So my recommendation would be that we're better to leave it in there so that if those types of properties come on our radar, that we can actually attack them in that year.
Okay.
Follow-up? Follow-up, Counselor Graham?
No, that's, I'm just, it seems confusing, but, you know, we'll move forward.
I'm wondering if we could ask our CAO when they're having their meetings to see what the, what the fellow municipalities are doing if this is, you know, a one-off or where we stand, if that could be followed up.
We can add it to the next treasurer's meeting as a discussion. Bring it back. Thank you.
Counselor Black.
Thank you through you, Warden. Just for clarification for my purposes, really, maybe people in the room. If farmland is identified in the official plan for future development, does that qualify? Or does they actually have to have an application in process for some, for that class to change for them?
Through the warden, it would have to be, so the ownership would have to be in the developer's name and not a actual farmer's name. And then typically, yes, it's starting to go through the farm process, or sorry, through the development process. So it's very common in the GTA where developers will buy farmland and they will farm winter wheat, as they call it. And it's a bit of a racket for developers to avoid having to pay the higher rate of taxes. And so it's probably not as common here. But yeah, so we would, we would look at any properties that are owned by developer that are being farmed and then have to make the determination of where they are in the process and whether it qualifies or not.
Followed. So again, just to clarify, so if it's identified in the official plan as future development, that's not, it's still taxes farmland until that happens. Thank you.
Any further questions? And I see none. So just a motion. Counselor Graham, since you pulled it, would you make the motion to receive? Thank you. And second, or Counselor Whalen, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. So back on again. Jennifer, please. This is our reserves update that has been mentioned.
I think this council meeting could have been just dedicated to me. So the first report I have on the agenda is the update on the council motion that came forward during budget for us to find a little over $200,000 in savings within the budget. We have done that. And there's a list of nine different projects that or nine different items where we have found savings within the budget or identified new revenue streams to a total of $214,752. um, to a total of two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, I can walk you through those in detail if you need me to, but the information's there in the report. I guess the one, um, that I want to highlight is the very last one, which is the credit card rebate. Um, this was the efforts of, of Michelle and finance, uh, working with Bill Lennon, who's our general manager of operations, to identify, um, some high volume, high dollar, um, items that we are now paying through credit card. Um, and the county gets a rebate for, for their purchases on a credit card. So we're expecting some, I, I guess to say we've put our sand and salt, um, all of our sand and salt costs are now going through a credit card. So we're expecting our credit card rebates to grow substantially. And Michelle's continuing to work with the various departments to see how many, um, how many of our invoices we can actually get on, on our visa program, uh, to help increase those revenues. So that was a, that was a good win. Um, the other, also in the report, there's a number of items that we're continuing to look at. Um, I'd say that most of these items are things that we were looking at anyways. It's not something, um, that came as a result of the direction from council on an annual basis. We do always look for efficiencies, uh, and so there's a number of items that we're still exploring. And as we're able to identify savings on those, we'll come back to the finance committee and come back to council, um, to let you know any, um, any increased revenues or reduced expenses that stem from those. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And, uh, thanks to, uh, Michelle for, uh, finding that low hanging fruit. That's great. So questions? Yes, Counselor.
Yes, through you, Warden Clark. So, so I appreciate all the work that's went into this, and it is something we asked for. I just wonder with a couple of the things on there, like emergency cross call, repair and, uh, um, signal maintenance, uh, I'm supposed, I, I imagine we have a way of dealing with it if something pops up. I know it's nice to pull some of these numbers, but I mean, they were in there for a reason. As long as we're still covered, emergencies, you never know when they're going to happen. So, um, I just want to make sure that we have a plan B.
Yeah, through the warden. Uh, so the emergency cross culverts, um, were in, uh, the operations department's budget for any unseen or emergency items. Um, through collaboration with engineering and construction, they were able to determine that they've actually got enough money in the emergency or the engineering and construction budget to cover the cost of those. So there's no risk to the organization there. Um, and the other ones, the washouts, a similar, washouts and traffic signals, similar story. Um, they're there for emergency purposes. When we look back, we've never utilized those budgets. Uh, so we feel pretty confident that we can reduce them. Um, and if there are any major events that come up, we do have the contingency line item in the budget that would be able to cover it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Further questions? Okay, a mover and Counselor Taylor and seconder, Rep. Counselor Martin, all in favor? Thank you. And you remain on, on the podium.
And so the next, uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, is the expense and professional development policy. So, um, as Counselor Taylor mentioned earlier today, um, there are a number of policies within corporate services that, uh, are old and haven't been reviewed in a long time. And so we've been working for the last year on updating a number of policies. I think we've had maybe three or four already come to council, and we've got some more today. So our expense policy has been updated. Um, the most notable changes, as it says in the report, we've now got staff that are working remotely and working from home. And so we've updated our mileage reimbursement outline how that works. Um, we've put some limitations on reimbursement to ensure that staff are using the most cost-effective mode of transportation. We've put some maximums in around meal allowances. Um, that's the primary changes on the ex, employee expense policy. And then our professional development policy, um, this policy has always been in place as well. Um, the changes that we've made is that we've now have directors and C A Os, um, approving those conferences and seminars. And that's really just to ensure that we can, that sta, we have an equal amount of opportunity for staff to attend events. And we're not have, seeing one or two staff in a particular department doing all the conferences. We want to make sure we're sharing those dollars, um, as well as limiting the number of employees who can attend the same event. Um, again, we, we found that we had multiple staff attending the same conference. We want to pare that down, let a couple of staff go and come back and share the knowledge with their colleagues. Let other staff attend the following year. Um, and then again, just clarifying staff reimbursement for travel outside of working hours. So those were the main changes on those. We do expect that there will be some savings, uh, both on the expense, uh, the employee expense side and the conference policy. We expect some savings from both of those, and, uh, they'll be reflected in the twenty twenty-six budget.
Thank you. And it's far more, uh, clearer policy, I think, and, and comprehensive for staff to be able to follow. Questions on that? If not, just a motion to receive? And Counselor Black and Counselor Lamb said, all in favor? So moved. And it is the Jennifer Stofford, you are on again regarding our, uh, I T again.
Yes, one more, sorry. Uh, so the last one's the I T policy. Um, this policy, um, is, is substantially not changed from the last policy that council approved. Um, but what we have done is add a number of procedures in the background that are for more staff generated on how staff will manage our I T, uh, transactions going forward.
Thank you. And questions on that? I see none. So a motion to receive. I'm looking on screen and Counselor Nelson and Counselor Whalen, all in favor? Thank you. And we're, uh, turning it over to Doug Secosha. I think we had the Doug Secosha show last time, so.
And through you, Warden. Good morning, counsel. The, uh, the staff report in front of you today was intentionally brought forward, uh, with both policies as one. Uh, so the community safety zone policy and the school zone policy, there is some integration. And so that's why staffer brought them forward as one report. I won't, uh, today go through reading the entire report, but I do have two highlights. Uh, the first, I do just want to highlight that the intention of these reports is to provide consistency and enhance safety, obviously, across Peterborough County region. Uh, so all those zones are of a similar manner and done in the same fashion with signage to improve that safety for, and consistency for the drivers. Uh, and the second, I do just want to take the time to really highlight and say thanks to, uh, all the staff and agencies that, uh, were consulted on this. A lot of hard work and time went in. We received some great, uh, comments and feedback. Uh, you'll see in the report, we had, uh, staff from the O P P, uh, P two O Police Service. We had the K P R School Board, uh, the P V N C School Board, uh, people are green up through, uh, active, uh, and safe routes to school. So a lot of staff and agencies have really weighed in on these, uh, policies. Just want to say thanks to their time.
Okay, thank you, Doug. And, and certainly, uh, all that collaboration, as you mentioned, to have consistency is very important. So questions on that? Just a mover, uh, then, uh, Counselor Webb, oh, sorry. Go ahead. We will stop and.
Thank you through your word. Thanks for the report, Doug. Um, a lot of the schools are, are on township roads as well. Uh, was there consultation at the township level to support similar policies around, uh, schools that aren't on county roads? I think you talked about consistency at the front of your presentation. Um, how were the townships involved or is it shared with the townships?
Uh, through you, Warden, and a great question. Uh, we didn't directly, uh, engage the townships for this type of policy as it does apply to county roads. But you'll see in the policy, we have made a comment where we want to be consistent. So if the, the local township, the, the school fronted on, say, a township road, uh, and the side yard was on the county road, we would actually look to the local township for a decision. So if they designate as a school zone, then we would do the same on the county road for consistency. So through implementation of the policy is where we would engage, uh, with the local townships to ensure that we're being consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes, go ahead. We'll be the second or Counselor Watson when we get through.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, Mr. Secosha. Doug, I'm curious, uh, first of all, I appreciate the work that's gone into this report. And, uh, I paid particular interest to some of the criteria that was identified specific to the Canadian accredited independent schools, which looks at, of course, like Phil Call School in Doro Demmer Township and, uh, and, and some of the other, uh, you know, private schools. So in the consultation process, were you somehow engaged with those schools? It's great that you're with the boards, but was the, were, were there thoughts and views on this to get into consideration?
Uh, through your warden, uh, unfortunately, no, we didn't get to, I guess, all the different types of schools in there. We did try to set some criteria to really define what we are defining as a school, and that's why we included that language. Uh, but we did not reach out to all specific schools. Uh, we mostly focused on the major two boards.
Okay, and that's fair. So then just as a follow-up, Warden, uh, it, given the fact that you're looking for comments by March third, uh, it would be perhaps prudent to circulate this to those school administrators that are being referenced in the report?
Uh, yeah, through your word. We could do that with the same deadline. And again, we'll be back in front of council, uh, with all comments received and looking to make any changes at the next council meeting. So.
Wonderful. Thanks, Doug.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion for your word.
Okay, uh, but would you like it amended though with asking for that circulation?
Sure, that would be great. Yes, thank you.
Okay, and just now, can you speak to the motion? I've got Counselor Lamb said, the sun, which is wonderful, we're not, certainly love the sun, but I cannot see directly. Yes.
Just one more question, uh, some application for community safety zones things are in the queue already. How's that going to affect that when we move forward?
Again, through you, Warden, a great question. So we do have a queue, uh, and we put basically a pause on some of those requests. So we're still receiving those requests, putting them in queue, uh, if and when the policy was to go through council, uh, the ones that in queue would go through this policy. So we'd apply the criteria that's been set out for both community safety zones, uh, and school zones that are currently in the queue. So implementation would have, happen after and if the policies were approved.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes, Counselor Black?
Thank you through your warden again. Um, if we can include in the, um, in the motion that the municipalities be also be, um, included. Um, your reference to private schools, someone has one on the center line crossing the township woodland, uh, drive, and it's not a community safety zone. And, uh, there are a lot of accidents at that corner, as, uh, we all know. Uh, there's well sign for stop on the woodland side, but, uh, there, there is a lot of, um, accident activity on that corner. So it'd be probably a good area for a community zoning conjunction with the county working on that. So if we could have the townships included and, and as well as the private schools.
Okay, so schools and lower tier municipalities. And then maybe once we do receive the policy and it's in its final and it's been passed, we'll also share that then with the lower tiers as well. So Counselor Webb, happy with those amendments?
Good verification. I'm adding the schools and the lower tiers to it. Yes, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. And second by Counselor Watson, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, and just Carrie is here. Yes, thank you. So Carrie, um, uh, is just our manager on waste and sustainability and just is regarding our non-eligible sources. She's, uh, following up on that. Thank you.
Good morning, counsel. Uh, so the purpose of this report, as the warden just said, was to provide a follow-up on the non-eligible source report that we brought to the January twenty-second council meeting. And this report provides a recommendation on how to proceed with collection of the non-eligible sources, beginning in twenty twenty-six, when we'll have to separate it from the eligible material collected by the producers. So at the meeting on January twenty-second, staff provided council with three options for twenty twenty-six, and those were continue curbside and depot collection to collect at depots only or to stop collecting from the non-eligible sources. During the meeting, we got several questions from councillors that I've followed up to provide a bit more of a response on in this report. And after the meeting, we also received one comment from a councillor, which has been included in the appendix. Uh, so staff were recommending that we continue curbside collection of non-eligible sources and we continue depot collection where possible. So staff would work with each individual township to determine what they would like, whether they would like the county to help take on that service, if they would like to do it on their own or, uh, whether they want to continue at all at depots. So we would work with township staff, uh, first, and then we would go out for procurement for a dedicated curbside route, uh, and depot route beginning January first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, so this option continues to support small businesses in the county, uh, as well as municipal facilities. It ensures the blue box diversion and will continue. And county staff will continue to advocate to the province that the, uh, non-eligible sources should be part of the producer responsibility legislation. This option results in no changes to the current non-eligible source properties other than there may potentially be a change in collection day because it will all be on one route rather than on the existing residential routes right now. And we would communicate to those non-eligible properties through an outreach campaign. Uh, so staff are recommending the program continue to be funded also by the residential and non-residential taxpayers. Um, this was in line with council's previous direction and results in a negligible change to all the properties as far as cost.
Thank you. Uh, questions? I see Counselor Graham.
Yeah, through you, Warden. Uh, so just so that I can understand the, the totality of the report, we're talking about hiring a separate trucking company or, you know, whether, with whatever composition they want to go around the entire county and collect from these non-eligible sources. Um, I, as much as I understand the intention, I just don't think that's something that we can continue to do. We didn't make the decisions with regards to, you know, the service changes with the upload of the collection. And a lot of the merits we have been discussing when it comes to the waste management as well. We're reducing the number of trucks, et cetera. And that's been a major factor to reducing the footprint. I understand there's an argument for diversion, but, uh, this is to me, again, one of those services that it's an expansion of service provision that from, that is the outcome of something that we didn't choose or do, but we participate in because the upload was happening at the provincial level. So, you know, this essentially at the cost undoes all of the efficiencies that staff have just worked to, to achieve in the levy. So I, I really think it's, unfortunately, and, and I would be curious to know if there's an opportunity for maybe just the depot collection, because that makes some sense. It gives the opportunity for those to participate with the existing infrastructure, the depots, without adding an additional whole trucking route, uh, at a significant cost. So is there any due diligence done, Carrie, on maybe having just the depot collection and what those potential costs or, uh, uh, opportunities might be?
Uh, through the warden, yes, that was an option outlined in the last report at the January twenty-second meeting. That could be depot collection only. Uh, it would likely be a much lower cost to have bins at just the transfer stations. I think, uh, the budget number I had in there was approximately sixty thousand dollars a year for one fiber and one container's bin at each transfer station or landfill throughout the county. I do think it would definitely have an impact on diversion. The diversion numbers would be much, much lower than if we, uh, continued to collect curbside. Um, part of that is due to the, um, like the businesses, they likely may not be willing to travel to the depot or have the means to do that. Um, and another aspect of it is just over fifty of the properties that we collect from are, uh, campgrounds and trailer park, um, areas, which have a significant amount of recycling that, um, they likely wouldn't be able to use the depot service. They would have to hire their own contractor if they're willing to do that. Um, so yeah, it is an option.
Thank you. And, uh, yes, still costly, as you say, maybe not capturing. Counselor Whalen? Jim, you're muted.
Yeah, thanks very much, uh, Warden. Um, um, following up on, um, uh, Counselor Graham's. Um, uh, people aren't allowed to put, uh, recycled material in the garbage collection. So, uh, uh, if we go to bins, uh, it's up to the, to the, um, businesses to get the, um, uh, recycling to those bins. Um, um, and, uh, i- if, if, if we're going to spend between twenty thousand and eight hundred thousand, um, um, I think we have to take a very serious look at this because, uh, what does eight hundred thousand dollars do to the budget, um, Michelle?
Okay, I can probably comment on it. Okay, through the warden. So it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than what we are paying right now. That, so we already are paying a significant amount right now. Um, but this eight hundred thousand would be about a hundred and fifty dollar, thousand dollar increase.
Which is what percentage?
Jen?
Point three percent.
Because, uh, the next budget, uh, council did very well by count, by staff this time, uh, uh, going with the budget we did. But, um, um, I'm going to be looking for a five percent increase for next year's budget. So, um, if there's, uh, I know you've tried, found some places to save, but, um, um, we've got to be careful about everything we agree to, uh, spend because, uh, Um, we've gotta be careful about everything we agree to uh, spend because uh. Um, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but to me, five percent is the maximum that I'll be looking at next year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whalen. I have councillor Taylor and then councillor Graham.
Thank you, Warden.
I have councillor Bert.
Greenly, thank you. Um, Carrie. Uh, yeah, certainly seems terribly inefficient that to hire a collection service to travel. The entire county to pick up about five hundred and fifty properties. I don't think there's any question about that. When these, um, when this collection service. Stops at each one of these properties, is there a maximum that they will pick up? Uh, you know, we we have a maximum number of blue boxes you can put out. Is there a maximum for for commercial properties?
Through the warden, so we do have a maximum in place right now through the waste bylaw. I believe it is ten blue boxes or two. Commercial cart sizes, uh, like ninety five gallon carts for a business. The campgrounds and trailer parks have no limit.
Well, okay. Okay, I I agree with councillor Whalen. We need to take another look at this, um, because it's very inefficient. And it's very costly. Thank you.
Councillor Graham?
Yeah, I was just following up on on the financial explanation uh, to councillor Whalen. Um. So when this full transition occurs, is the true cost to provide or continue to provide this service eight hundred thousand? Right, so by not choosing to do this dedicated route with one facility, we are reducing eight hundred thousand from the budget. Because we won't be in that business anymore. So it's not a hundred and fifty thousand we're saving, it's the full eight hundred.
Right.
Okay, and you know, I just, I understand and I can emphasize that we wanna, you know, support different communities, but a lot of businesses are already. You know, investing in privately addressing their collections from whether it's recycling and or or waste. I mean, it's it's a part of doing business. And I understand that if municipalities wanna decide and help subsidize or offset additional, you know, private pickup arrangements with the, you know, the various. Businesses in their municipality, then then so be it. But I just don't think it's. It's something that the county can endeavor down. So um, and agreeing with councillor Whalen and Taylor.
Thank you, and councillor Bert.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Warden. Um, yeah, very, very similar vein. I I I wouldn't want to make the decision that, yes, we're going with this today. Um, I certainly reached out to to our staff and they're. Kind of looking at it within our own municipality with businesses to see, you know, who's, who is doing it privately. Who is still using this service and and it's tricky. Um. You did say in the report that um, city of Coortle Lakes, I believe, is doing, um, i- is looking to do a joint service. And like, we, we're in the, we need to look beyond our boundaries and do these shared services. So that's also an option. So. I'm really not prepared to make a decision on this today. Um, I think we need to look at all our options, but. I'm kind of leaning towards um, what councillor Graham said, it is the cost of doing business. Um. And it's, it's another place where we've been put between a rock and a hard place and no decision will be right. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. And to that point. Um, and I think we did ask the question and and it's very, um. I would say time uh. Time sensitive as well, but the fact, can we charge? Uh, businesses separately, but then that would. Be a lot of staff time and and it would be a a hard exercise to go through because, you know, to the point. Businesses, as councillor uh, Graham said, it's part of doing business, but it doesn't just include businesses here. We have. Churches, we have our own municipal offices as well. But should they be paying a different fee than our residents? That's the other question. Councillor Black.
Thank you through you, Warden. Um. Yeah, I spoke very positively about diversion at this meeting many, many times. That's how I got my polit- political start. With garbage. Uh, but um, I also owned an apartment building at one point and. Uh, although I paid very high taxes, uh, the residential tax rate was one point eight time the residential rate for multi-res in Peterborough. Uh, but I had a garbage chute and I had to pay to have my own garbage taken away, even though I already paid the taxes to the municipality to do that. Um, as same with recycling, uh, because they, we use big bins, they didn't have the machine to. Take the big bins, so we had to pay for that as part of uh, a part of doing business, even though we paid through our tax like everybody else to have it. So. Um. I I think we need another look at it. I agree with the the majority of the members today. I think we need another look at it. I'd like to see. Some kind of consolidation, uh, if if it's possible. Uh, but to put that amount of money into the budget, uh, for uh, a limited number of uh. Uh, well-deserving businesses and churches and and organizations, I think we need a another look at it uh, on a, on a longer term basis. At this point, I I'm not prepared to support a motion today either. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, shared, please speak.
Uh, thank you, and through you. There may be uh, as well an opportunity for the county to look into coordinating. Uh, proposal on behalf of the businesses and proponents, so. Uh, amalgamating the requirements that they would pay for directly with the provider, but we may be able to provide that function to help bring people together. Um, so that could be something we could further look into as well from a procurement perspective.
Okay, I don't see any further questions. So I think just a motion then to receive uh, the report. Councillor Graham and councillor Nelson. Moving to receive the report, thank you. And councillor Nelson, all in favor? Thank you. Does anyone have a notice of motion? Thank you, Carrie. I see none and announcements sent. Yes, councillor Bert.
Uh, thank you through you, through you, Warden. Um, as I stated, before February eighth was celebration of Agriculture Night at Lang and. Uh, thank you to councillor Taylor and Ward Clark was there to present certificates to the, to the award winners. Um, who were the Cornish family, farm family of the year. Steve Breckenridge was the longstanding agricultural service award winner. I believe that's the title. And Paul McMahon of Star Fry Feeds was the um, Cattlemen's Award winner of excellence. So it was a very good night. Our guest speaker was Senator Rod Black. It was excellent. His focus is on rural and and ag. And uh. Yeah, so so it was a great night. But what I did, I came bearing gifts today. Um, you may or may not want one. Um, the O F A provides a program called the Revive Funding to the, to the local um, county federations. And the last couple of years, we've partnered with the county and the local O P P for road safety. And um, part of that road safety, it was was a lot of education for the public, but. Road safety is also the responsibility of the farmers and those of us who drive slow-moving vehicles. So part of the revive funding. Was to get slow-moving vehicle signs. So if anybody needs one, I have a bunch. Councillor Taylor has one.
Yeah.
Warden Clark has one, but if anybody needs some, I have some. So come and see me. All right, so thank you.
Thank you. And uh, Senator Black actually got his start as a young man here in Peterborough in the Omaha. Office when we did have a Federation of Ag Office here in Peterborough. So quite familiar with our area. So it's a pleasure to have him. Councillor Webb.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Um, so next Monday, um, February twenty fourth, we're having the, our second annual. Uh, Meet the Pete's Day at the Havelock Arena. So the Peterborough Pete's will be coming down to Havelock, we'll, they'll run a practice. And there'll be a short uh, twenty thirty minute skate session with uh, some of the kids from uh, minor hockey. And just inviting everyone to open, not just open to H B M residents, open to all residents of. Peterborough County and everywhere. So uh, starting next Monday, uh, three thirty, I think, believe on the ice from three thirty to five. And then there'll be refreshments, pizza and food goodies, treats afterwards upstairs. So. Um, anyone that would like to join or anyone have any young ones that are interested in the Pete's, come on down to Havelock next Monday. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll get that on the county website as well. So thank you. And uh, just wanted to mention that our next county council meeting is March the fifth. And we're inviting um, all council members to wear uh, green that day. Uh, we will be uh. Raising the Irish flag in front of the county uh, courthouse uh. To celebrate the two hundredth anniversary of the Peterborough Robinson Immigration or uh. Uh, nine ships that, as it is referred to. So uh, asking as many people uh, to come in person to our next county council. Meeting to be part of that. So, thank you. And I'll now ask our clerk to read the bylaws.
Uh, we have one bylaw on today's agenda. It's twenty twenty five oh six. Um, and that is to amend our existing retention period for records. Um, just to include updates uh, that we've made over the past couple of years.
Okay, so just a mover councillor Franzen and councillor Lamb said, all in favor? It's so moved, thank you. Confirming bylaw. A mover and secondor councillor Bert and councillor Wilford, all in favor? Thank you, and adjournment. Councillor Martin and councillor Graham, all in favor. Thank you.